Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, July 9th, 2018 to order. Recognize that we have a quorum of the licensing board this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have five additional items on tonight's agenda, starting with item number one. Approval of the minutes from the regular licensing board meeting of June 18th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of the licensing board, June 26th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is amusement arcade license for EW Class LLC, Ion Sports Pub at 1102 East Paradise Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number four is operator's license for Brad Chalupka. And we have a presentation tonight by Chief of Police Ken Moeller. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. Mr. Chalupka applied as an agent for a license in April of this year. Police Department recommended denial based upon a felony conviction for the manufacture and delivery of marijuana. And he was able to reapply in less than a year period of time because he came and this time applied as an operator, but we have the same objection, so I would recommend denial of his license.
Thank you, Chief. Is Mr. Chalupka in the audience tonight? I want to entertain a motion from the licensing board.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number five is approval of operators' licenses. And the list, I believe, was in our packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And there being no further business before the licensing board, I adjourn.
I'd like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We only have two items on tonight's agenda. The first being the approval of the minutes from the Board of Public Works' regular meeting on June 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion, comments, or corrections? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Second item is permission to advertise Contract 18-04, crack sealing of pavements at various locations, and a presentation by Emily in place for Max.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to request permission to advertise Contract 1804, crack sealing of pavements at various locations for bids. Streets we're planning to crack seal this year include River Road from County Highway NN to Decorah Road, Veterans Avenue from Main to Water, the Barton Avenue Bridge Deck, River Shores Drive from North Main to Veterans, the Glen Ivy Subdivision, the Prairie Meadow Subdivision, and Western Court and Western Place. Our preliminary cost estimate for the project was $53,000, and we're planning to use PMP funds for this project. And assuming favorable action tonight, we've also provided you with a project schedule.
All right, thanks, Emily. Does anyone have any questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, motion as second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And with that, I adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the Finance Committee for July 9th to order. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes from June 18th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number two is approval of the First Amendment for a memorandum of understanding for Regner Park Baseball Field. And I think, Mayor, you were going to kick things off on this?
I can, yes. Thanks, Rich. I was invited to and attended the school district or school board work session last week, Monday, I believe it was, Monday or Tuesday, one of the two days, to discuss the MOU, the Carl Coast Field improvements. As you guys will recall, we approved two memorandums of understanding a couple of weeks ago, one between the city, the school district, and the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, and the second MOU is the one that's in our hands today. This was drafted by Ian and modified by the school district. And our discussion centered around, and the changes are highlighted in yellow here, centered around the school district contributing $100,000 via an interest-free loan from the city. So we would kick in $100,000 on their behalf. They would pay us back in equal installments of $10,000 a year for 10 years. They certainly could accelerate those payments if they'd like to. And then a couple other, I would call them minor modifications, just to clarify that the intent is that during high school games, they can, if they choose, charge admission and keep those funds, they can run the concession stand and keep those funds, that the field could be used for, obviously, male or female sports. And that this memorandum of understanding really doesn't create any type of a legal obligation at this point. It's really our three organizations, the baseball association, the city, and the school district, agreeing that we're going to try to agree on something in the future. But this is a big first step. The folks that are out privately fundraising would really like to see all three of our organizations on the same page, and I think this accomplishes that. This also is the trigger point for the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation, the organization that has contributed to matching funds. This will get them moving in the right direction as well. So I would welcome any questions, but I would ask the council approve this. I'll sign off on this one and the one we also already approved tonight, and get that over to the school district tomorrow. And hopefully, we're off and running on some Carl Coast Field improvements.
Thanks, Craig. I do want to put a reminder out there that one of the reasons that the city did decide to move in this direction is that we get out of the business of maintaining that, and that continues to stay as part of this understanding.
Yes, and that's part of the MOU, is that we, with the baseball association, will work out them maintaining, managing the field. Thanks for bringing it up. It's also important to note that we spend somewhere in the $50,000 to $70,000 range, I believe our number was, to maintain the field. That will be eliminated. Also, as part of the fundraising, the $2 million project is about $150,000 that is earmarked for long-term maintenance. So there will be some ongoing maintenance costs. That's something we also talked about with the school district, is that we'll ask the baseball association to come up with a budget, what it's going to take for them to, these things aren't completely maintenance-free, but it's a lot less work than chalking lines and watering grass and cutting grass. But to make sure that we know what those expenses are going to be, and then also make sure that they've got a plan for where those revenues will come from as the manager of the field.
Great, thanks. Yes, Chris?
I just want to confirm in your talks with the school district, and you and I talked a little bit in the past, too, you're pretty confident of their willingness to back this because I just don't want to see it blow up in anybody's face.
No, that one member of the school board was not in attendance, but everybody else was, along with the acting superintendent at the time. And I said the same thing, that I'm going back in front of my peers, and I'd like, I asked them all to smile and nod that they're in agreement with the changes and the modifications, and they were. So I'm confident that they'll hold true to their word.
Right, thank you.
Yes, Steve?
So, I just want to make sure I'm clear in this, and I think I am. We're putting in $100,000 of our own money, $75,000 in labor, and then we're loaning another $100,000 to the school.
Correct.
Okay. Is this kind of a hinging point that they couldn't come up with the money? Or, I'm just asking.
That's what they told me. The quote, I'm probably going to misquote a little bit, but according to the paper, the quote was that they don't know where they would come up with $100,000, although they wanted to be recognizing the value to their organization, recognizing the value to the community.
Okay, so like Chris said, they can't come up with the $100,000, but they can come up with the $10,000 to pay us back every year?
And what they were advised, or we were advised at the meeting by their director of facilities, was that they'll have to put in probably $10,000 a year in additional maintenance costs at the high school if they continue to use those fields. So they're recognizing that one way or another, they're going to have to come up with the dollars. And if they can do it for a 10-year chunk of time and then not have to do it any further, then that makes sense to them. Also in here, I should have also mentioned, they own a piece of equipment. I'm not familiar with it, but there's some piece of equipment that you use to put all the little black BBs down on these turf fields. They own that to use up at the high school currently, and part of the MOU is that they'll allow the baseball association to use their equipment, so the association doesn't have to go and buy this. So I truly feel that it's a, gesture's not a strong enough word, but this truly is, it should be important for the community to recognize that our two organizations, along with the baseball association, really are standing arm-in-arm, recognizing the importance of this field, recognizing that we've got a half a million dollar matching grant, and we've got members of the community saying they can go out and raise $1.2 million because that's the math. Roughly $300,000 is coming from the association, the city, and the school district. $500,000 comes from a matching grant, and $1.2 million comes from donated money throughout the community. And I think that's the pretty phenomenal piece of this, is that we continually see, whether it's river projects or parks downtown, or new bridges, or baseball diamonds, that this community steps forward. So I think it's a pretty neat model, and hopefully, other community passions would come forward in a similar light.
I think it sends a great message that, you know, all the units can work together for a change instead of constantly butting heads and going a separate way and taking my football and going home.
In this case, their baseball.
Good point, good point.
Yes, Chris, or Mike, I'm sorry, Mike.
All right, Rich, thank you. So the MOU here is not necessarily a final contract of any sort, more of just an understanding. Is there any point where negotiations could break down based on issues such as priority of use, or conditions of the field, or requirements of conditions where one of the organizations involved here would suggest that this isn't going to work for them moving forward?
I'll address both of those. The first one came up at the meeting. I asked, one of the athletic directors was there, I said, you know, knowing that the city, I think we officially used the field last year for like one day, for a chunk of the mud run, maybe, so I let them know that, hey, this is kind of a community use, it's really not a city use. So I asked the athletic director how they figure out who's playing where. And historically, the athletic directors put a request in, I believe, to our staff. And then after that, the men's league hardballs, they adjust their schedule around the hardball schedule. So what I, I don't know if that's making sense or not, so priority has been the school district first. I think there's going to be less conflicts going forward because the high school is moving to spring baseball, and the men's league doesn't start until, you know, mid-May, when high school will just about be ending then. And then also knowing that the men's leagues play one or two nights a week and then weekends, the hope is that there'll be some Little League games or Senior League games that can be played there as well. So I think there's, long story short, there's been an unwritten rule that the high school's taking priority. The men's league fills in behind that. So in writing, there'll have to be some priority list laid out like that. But knowing that it's been in place for a while, I think it should work out fine. As far as maintenance is concerned, that's another question that I've got, that we'll have of the Cal Ripken Junior Foundation. They must have, like, we've got a Pazer rating for roads. They must have some type of a rating on how does your field, what's your field condition in. So I think we're going to want to make sure that it's being maintained in a safe, at a safe level and, you know, the appropriate level. So that'll be part of the MOU, and I guess conversations could break down, although we're all going at this with the intent that we're going to be maintaining the, that the field will be maintained, that the fundraising of 150 grand sits there for, you know, major repairs or major improvements. But then on an annual basis, the hope is the association is generating revenue to do the annual maintenance.
I have the most, you know, faith and positive outlook on this moving forward. I think everyone, if we're willing to get this far into it, I think we'll find the happy mediums down the road in the rest of the contracts and negotiations.
And we do want to make sure, however, that it, you know, it's still going to be a city park, no matter if we're not using it and we're not maintaining it or managing it, it's still a city park. And we don't want 15, 20 years from now, those groups come forward and say, now it's time for someone to fix the field, and we don't have any money, so city, you might as well do it. I think we want to take the appropriate steps to insulate the city from that, and that's part of the next step of the process.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, just one concern. Someone approached me and asked, by doing this with the school district, are we going to be possibly opening a can of worms for other nonprofit organizations coming in and requesting assistance from the city if we did it for school district? And I didn't have an answer for them. So I just was wondering, I don't think that's our policy behind this, but I would bring that concern up, and I didn't.
It's a fair question, and I'll just say, in my mind, we've had relationships with the school district from, you know, forever, them using the hardball diamond, we use the swimming pool. They use our tennis courts and some softball fields occasionally, and we're not sending invoices back and forth. So I view this as an extension of that. We're two organizations that have the wherewithal, they can certainly pay us back, whereas depending on the nonprofit, that could certainly be a concern, the financial viability. If there's another school district that comes along and has the same request of us, well, then maybe we would consider it. But I don't know that it's opening up a can of worms beyond that. It's a pretty unique project, I think.
And I think it's important to note again, we're going to see a net positive from this. You know, I think it's a two-year return of investment, so it's not like we're putting money into something and we're not going to see anything from it. We're going to have, we're going to save the $60,000 or whatever it is, maintenance every year. And then, you know, once we get done, you know, two years, we're making money again, so.
Yeah. I totally like the whole scenario because of the fact that you got less maintenance, and you don't have to worry about weather conditions, canceling games. It's going to keep things moving. And plus, the fact that it's definitely going to be a plus for the city. We'll have other communities coming in here, looking at tournaments and stuff to set up. So I like that idea. I just had a concern with the school district not coming up with the money and asking us. That was the only concern.
Thanks, John. Any other comments or questions? If not, an entertaining motion, the memorandum?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. And being no further business for the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
Thanks, Rich. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, July 9th, 2018 to order, and recognize that we do have all eight aldermen here in attendance this evening. We have 14 items on tonight's agenda, starting out with item number one, approval of the minutes from the regular common council meeting of June 18th, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the special common council meeting of June 26th, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections there? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Items number three through six are under the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number seven is a public hearing regarding weights and measures assessments. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number eight is a final resolution for the levying and collecting of special assessments under Section 66.0703 Wisconsin statutes for the July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, weights and measures inspections performed by the State of Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trade, and Consumer Protection and pursuant to municipal code section 12.26. We have a presentation by City Clerk Stephanie Jessman. Anything exciting to learn about that?
This is something that we do every year. We currently contract with the Department of Ag, Trade, and Consumer Protection to perform our inspections on our weights and measures devices at our businesses. And this is the way for the city to recoup our costs. Currently, our contract is $10,800, and to special assess this back into the businesses that have this service performed for them.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any questions for Stephanie? Or is it entertaining a motion on the item?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number nine is a 2019 budget preview by City Administrator Jay Chambeau. Good evening, Jay.
Good evening. The technology works from here, so we're going to...
The technology works from here, so we're going to chat through, maybe. Of course, the computer went to sleep. Hey, success. So the mayor mentioned at the last meeting that audit report day is one of his favorite days. Preview or presentation is one of my favorite days, so exciting to have this back-to-back. Some of these slides, you're going to recognize from the last meeting that you had two weeks ago, and the presentation from Carla. Just thought we would include them again, they're a little more simplified for tonight's discussion. But positive trends for sure financially, but fund balance amounts have increased, debt has decreased, no surprise to both of those two items, and you'll see a chart on them in a second. Our net new construction continues to be strong, not out-of-the-park strong, but strong nonetheless. There are new construction items going on, and that have gone on in 2017, that'll help us for the 2018 budget, and same for 2018 in the future. I do point out that the assessed values continue to rise, if you've been paying attention to the market. Homes are selling within hours, if not days, here in West Bend, so as Jeff and his team is working through the revale for 2018, you're going to see some percent increases for folks regarding their total assessed value. Now, tax rate-wise, that doesn't mean that they're going to be paying more in their total tax bill, the rate will be adjusted accordingly to keep that at a modest level. This slide you saw at the last presentation, so the median is the top line, the orange 30%, 17% is the minimum, and the council has a policy currently on the books that talk about those two, and what happens below 17%, that it can't go below 17%, and what happens if it gets to 30%. We're currently at just over 25, 25.11% at the end of 2017, so lots of positive growth, and we've tempered that over the last couple of years by using some of the unspent budgeted monies to increase the fund balance at a level, but at a slower level than we have in the years 14 and 15 to 16, where you can see the significant jump. So the projected growth is still going to be there, as I know the mayor and the council has expressed interest to get to 30%, but ideally at a, maybe more tempered growth in the next few years. This chart you saw last time as well, it's a little complicated, but it shows some growth towards the median. The median number, if I point out with a pointer on the chart, that you can or cannot see? Cannot see. The first green, small green line, shows our total fund balance against the median, and then unassigned against the median, and we have made growth from 2012 up to 2017. We're still not there regarding the median communities that were measured against, but getting closer to that measure. And then another measure against similar-sized communities is their debt service to non-capital expenditures. You can see that the median has grown a bit over the years in the percent, and ours has declined to almost meet. So we're probably two years out from having those two be a successful goal regarding our debt service to non-capital expenditures. More good news. Just some high-level goals for 2019. 2019's probably not the budget year that we are going, you're going to see departments proposing new services, or adding a bunch of staff. I did have the conversation with department heads, and Kerry, as our finance administrator, presented our budget instructions a couple of weeks ago, and we talked about continuing level of service for 2019 as being a budget goal. Our net new construction and our levy limits are still as such that it's not a year where we're going to see significant increases. The second bullet talks about the school district conversations that Chief Moeller and the school have been having about some security additions. There's talk of an additional security officer, and having conversations with the school district regarding funding that officer, but you will likely see a request for a new position within PD, so an additional officer that is on the books and assisting at the school. Maintaining health insurance contributions for our employees, that's something that this council has done a great job of, getting our health insurance costs in check, and employees have helped with that over the years. Those numbers are now at 17.5% for family plans, and even higher than that for the single plans. We think, assuming that health insurance costs don't significantly rise, or other revenues go in the tank, that we're there, where the council's desires have been to get us at that 17.5% and not, hopefully not have further increases for employees regarding the contributions. So certainly a goal that we'll pursue for 2019. We also talk about an appropriate amount of net new construction. We have used net new construction in the past couple of budget years since I've been here, but not taxed to the max, taxed to the appropriateness of the budget requests, and the willingness of the council and mayor to get us at a rate. And then employee merit. It's no secret to any of you that competition for labor is steep, it's tough right now. We still have plenty of applicants for our position, so we're not in a position of not being able to hire folks, but encouraging the council to be supportive of a merit increase for 2019 is a budget goal as well. As far as how much that percent is, we can have that discussion, and begin to have that tonight. And then continuing to receive the GFOA award, Kerry and her team did a nice job with the 2018 budget, positioning the City of West Bend to be an award-winning budget document. Might not mean a lot to an individual taxpayer on the street, but from a professional standpoint, it really stands, our budget really stands out against the rest, and Kerry deserves all the credit for that, and the department heads that were willing to meet her expectations and requirements to do what it takes to get to that award status. Some challenges that still lie ahead, the dark store issue is not gone, Walmart and Menards, we still have active court cases with, five-year capital improvement plan continues to be a discussion item, obviously on an annual basis. We'll be bringing that 2019 capital improvement plan to you in the next month or so for approval. And then the long-range transportation funding, Rich and the committee, Long Range Transportation Planning Committee have been working on that item for some time. Dark store-wise, there is a legislative study committee that we're fortunate, Representative Rick Gundrum is on, so he'll be representing our interests. Well, the mayor, Jeff Yoder, and I sat down with him and his chief of staff recently, within the last couple of weeks, to talk about the formation of that committee, congratulate him, and share some West Bend information with him. He's excited to know that he has a friend on the issue in West Bend, and a good resource for reliable data. We've already sent him some data for that, and are hopeful that the legislative study committee comes out with positive action. The resolution with Shopko and Meyer was a success in 2017. We still do have two lawsuits, as I mentioned, and we have exposure for those lawsuits at about $260,000. So a significant number, if we were to be in a negative position on both of them. We're hopeful that we're not, but still one that we need to be cautious with, and cautious with any kind of increase regarding budget. Those are lawsuits that we would pay the entire 260, because they're both in TIF districts. So unlike the Shopko case, when we settled, we had a charge-back provision with the other taxing entities, in these two, we would not. And then if the loophole is not closed, if legislation is not passed, just the unknown future exposure, some municipalities have attempted to calculate what that is, and it, I mean, it really could be exponential from unknown cost.
Hey, Jay, can I just ask you back on the previous line? So if the legislation hopefully does do something about closing these loopholes, is it retroactive? As in, would it help us with those current cases that are going on?
If the legislation passes, it would certainly help us with the current cases that are going on, assuming they're not settled by the time that legislation passes. It's not retroactive, so we would not be able to recoup unreceived monies, but prospectively, if the legislation passes, it'll help us just be in a defensible position.
Yep. Thank you.
Walgreens, for example, we'd be able to go back and say, we're going to assess you what you used to be assessed, not the pittance that they are right now, basically.
Awesome.
But retroactivity, we wouldn't be able to get back.
Correct. 2019 going forward, they could be back to their $6 million, instead of the two that they're at, or whatever it is.
Right. So moving on to CIP, the CIP was raised to 2 million in 2019. We will be recommending a $2 million borrowing again in 2019, it was raised in 2018 from a million and a half. We do have roads and fire as our priority items within the 2019 spend. This is where the slower growth of the fund balance comes into play. When we bring the 2019 CIP to you, you'll see it at a smidge over 2 million, 2.3 is the number, and so most of that 2.3 is taken up by fire and roads alone, so the balance of that 340,000 or so that we're proposing for 2019 would go to the other departments. And then that 342,000 would come from unspent $2018, assuming we have some, and if not, it would come from the River Road deal, or from fund balance. So as we have been able to turn back unspent dollars in previous years, we're proposing to do that at a slower rate, so that the fund balance continues to grow, but it grows at a slower rate, and we're able to accomplish more off the CIP list. And then, once again, Long Range Transportation Planning Committee, continuing to discuss roads as a priority, and then just prioritizing the needs throughout the rest of the organization. Local roads, we've talked enough about the advisory referendum. The Long Range Transportation Committee has addressed that issue, and will continue to be making a recommendation to the full council. And then three funding, potential funding sources are discussed there at the bottom of that slide. Half percent sales tax, continuing to have that conversation with Washington County regarding revenue sharing of the half percent sales tax that they collect on behalf of the City of West Bend, returning a portion of that to the city. Increased property tax dedicated to roads, can only have it dedicated to roads as much as this council, you can't bind future councils for that decision, but you could make that designation within an annual budget. And then any borrowing regarding roads would obviously be an option as well. We do have some $2020, $2,020 that are, a million dollars that are coming off, and Rich's committee has directed Max to come up with some scenarios as to how much increase of improving the roads, spending a portion of that million dollars would have an advantage to future road replacement. Next steps, the recommendation to council, encouraging legislators to pass the loophole closing for dark store issue. Continued work, that's just like we continually work on an annual operating plan, we continually to work on the five-year capital plan. And then you'll see in detail on October 1, 2019 budget review, you'll also get to see as next meeting, the July 23 meeting, we've asked Phil Kossen from Ellers to come and present some information on TIF and debt, especially for the newer members, but it'll be a good refresher for all council members. And that's it. Questions or comments?
Anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Jay? I'll start. Can, maybe I'm putting you on the spot, but I hope not. Can you explain briefly the dark store issue, what its current, or where we're having an issue with it currently, and what potentially the legislation could change about our situation?
Yeah, there's really a two-pronged issue with the dark store theory. The mayor mentioned Walgreens, that's the, the one prong is the lease rate, so when a Walgreens is sold for $6 million, which our Walgreens have been sold for $6 million, there is a claim that they're not, they're not really that valuable, that they're being sold for their prospective income on that lease. So their claim was that they're only valued at a much lower rate, and they won in the court of law in this loophole for the lease rate issue, at about 2 million. So the numbers that the mayor mentioned were spot on, we have two Walgreens that were sold recently, one for six, and one for a little more than six, but were mandated to assess them only at 2 million dollars. The second, the second issue is the dark store, truly the dark store theory, where big-box stores like Menards, Walmart, Shopko have made the claim that they shouldn't be assessed at the thriving business that they are, they should be compared to a boarded-up or dark store, a store that's no longer functioning, that's where the dark store theory comes from. The thought process on their end is that their business, the Menards name, the Meyer's name, is what makes that valuable, not the fact that they're a thriving multimillion-dollar business, okay? That they should be compared to a much lower-valued building that they can point to throughout the state. Thankfully, we don't really have any boarded-up big-box stores for any significant time. We have some vacancies right now with the Boston store going out, that's probably the closest thing that we have to a comparable dark store, but nothing that has been historical in West Bend.
And potentially what the legislation could change about that?
They could close the loophole. So the tax accountants for these big-box stores found this loophole within the law, and it's not just here in Wisconsin, it's in other states as well. Some states have chosen to legislatively close that loophole. Wisconsin was really, really close last legislative session, thought there was enough votes to get that job done, but in the end, did not take up the legislation for vote. We're hopeful that this legislative study committee that's been formed to address the issue, and has some really smart, expert people on the committee, one being our attorney, Amy Seibel, who is, has been a big part of the dark store closure for the loophole, and is a real big proponent of getting rid of that law. That'll close the loophole and require Jeff and his team to assess these stores properly.
Appropriately, right. Okay, and then my final comment is just, again, commending the department heads, and yourself, and the previous councils for the job well done, and keeping the finances in really good shape, and moving in a really great direction, so it's a good, good to see that report. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rich? So Jay, one of your slides had talked about the, working with the school district on safety. Are they coming to the table with, you know, an offer that they'll help fund that, or are we on the hook for the entire cost of that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Rich. So the conversations have been mainly along the lines at this point with the chief in the school district about meeting the need, not so much the financing, but at the same time, that does come up, and the thought process is that they would fund the additional officer that's put into schools. Currently, we have three officers in the school, resource officers in the schools, and we receive an $80,000 contribution from the school district, so not even covering the cost of one of the three officers. Early conversations or thought processes that they would cover at least the additional officer at full rate. If you saw the paper today, there's similar conversations that occurred between Hartford and the school district in Hartford, and they reached an agreement as to funding at a percentage as well.
What was that percentage?
It was 68%.
So the school district pays 68% of the officer.
The total cost, yeah.
And right now, the district pays 30-ish.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else?
That's all I have right now.
See you in October, Jay.
Deal. Awesome. Actually, next meeting with Phil, but thank you all.
Any questions, guys? Item number 10 is a resolution transferring funds to redemption, Washington County Capital Fund/Library, GO- Washington County Capital Fund/Library GO Refunding Bonds. Can, Stephanie, can you give us a heads up on that one? Looks like, I believe, this is the, the funding we get from Washington County to help fund the library?
It's an annual transfer.
Got it. From Washington County to the city.
Something that we do every year. Yes, that we just transferred into the library funds.
So, it's funding from Washington County, makes a quick pit stop in the city checking account, and then goes to the library. Got it.
Motion approved.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 11 is an operator's, operator's license for Brad Chalupka.
Motion denied.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item 12, creating section, section 17.25 parent 3 parent I, 17.305 parent 3 parent F, and 17.355 parent 3 parent D, and 17.44 parent 111.5, to require a conditional use permit and a definition for mobile food vendors. And we have a presentation tonight by Business and Development Planner James Ranky. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're asking the council to consider a zoning code change to create the conditional use for mobile food vendors in the B1, B7, MXD districts, and also to actually create the definition for mobile food vendors. We've had multiple requests for this. Back in May, we did a temporary use permit for the barbecue vendor that's over at Menards. So, what we did is we looked at the code, see what changes were needed to permit this, and how to basically administrate that use. So, we came up with the possibility in asking the council to look at creating this conditional use permit for mobile food vendors in these districts, commercial districts where we do allow restaurant uses as permitted uses. Since they are kind of a unique animal, where they're temporary or, you know, kind of seasonal, or they come and go, we're just asking that the council create this so it gives our planning commission the ability to approve these food vendors as a special use in these districts, where we can evaluate the locations, the impacts of parking, and pedestrian movements and what have you in there. So, we're asking the council to consider the, the approval of this, for our commission to consider these as conditional use.
Take it, Jim.
Motion approved.
Let's hit some questions first. Mike?
All right. I guess my first question would be, how did, how did you come up with the specific areas that you would limit this to, rather than decide that it's just kind of a free-for-all and they can set up wherever they want?
Sure. The reasoning behind the, and kind of the, our method to our madness, I guess you could say, is that we looked at all the different districts, all the different commercial districts, and we looked at where restaurant uses were permitted. And in this case, you know, they're permitted in most of the, the commercial districts. We didn't go into the B2 and like the B3, B5, and B6, because the, the sites themselves in those areas aren't, either A, they didn't have resident, or restaurant uses in there, or B, they really weren't conducive for allowing, you know, the sites weren't designed for, you know, large parking lots, you know, traffic flows and what have you. In these other districts that we have here, we have larger sites, larger parking lots, pedestrian traffic, and and even, you know, the vehicular traffic can be evaluated, and, and, and the sites are actually designed more for extensive uses.
To piggyback off of Mike's comment, that would this be on a per, like a situational use anyway? Because don't they have to get approval every time that they're doing it?
Not as a conditional use. What, the conditional uses actually go with the property. So, what, what the, either the vendor is doing or the property owner is doing is they're establishing an exact location, establishing, you know, when they would allow them to be there, durations and what have you. And that also gives our planning commission the ability to evaluate these on individual bases.
Okay. Thanks for educating me.
It does come forward for an approval at the planning commission, and I think it does eliminate what we had a few years ago, was sort of a free-for-all where some food trucks were parking right in front of a restaurant, and I think justifiably, the restaurant was saying, "Hey, guys, I'm paying property tax here." It's tough to park right in front of somebody else's front door. So, I, we looked at this a couple of times now at the planning commission level, and we've, this is occurring at Menards right now, and I think with
Right.
good success, from what I've seen.
Also, with the conditional use, it gives us, it gives the city and, you know, property owners within the 200 feet, the ability to comment or express concerns in regarding to this. So, it, it does make it public. So, we do have a public notice in the paper. We do a 200-foot mailing. So, it's not that, you know, people aren't being notified of, of the uses that, that could occur there.
John, did you have a question? Or is it answered?
Mike took care of it for me.
Gotcha.
I guess I would have a follow-up question then, if I might. Are we, we're not putting ourselves on the hook for allowing something that once, if we get, you know, some complaints or anything like that, that we all of a sudden have to allow this to, to continue to occur? We have an out, or a way to get, to disallow the use?
Yeah, there, as part of the, the conditional use process, our planning commission does have the ability to do, say, a one-year review or annual reviews as, as a condition of the, of the conditional use permit. We've done it on a couple of occasions where, you know, the, the commission wasn't completely, they're a little on the fence on whether it should go or not. And so, what they did is they said, "Okay, we'll allow this for one year, and we'll come back with an annual review. And then, if we have complaints or concerns or comments or whatever, they could address it at that one-year time to either try to rectify it and allow it again, or we could, you know, or they could say, "No, you know, you guys were in violation of your conditional use permit. You didn't meet, you know, the criteria of the permit, so we're going to deny it."
And then, just finally, thank you. And then, finally, the, is there any, unless I'm missing it, is there any commentary in here about maximum number of days that can be used for one permit or license?
No. With the conditional use permit, it's going with the land, so it could be, they could do it every day. Or it could be limited, you know, but typically, the, you know, in, in these uses that we've seen, they're typically during certain months or time periods, typically when it's nice out, versus, you know, over the winter months.
Sure. But there's nothing saying that they couldn't open a 365 new portable restaurant?
They could request it, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Motion was made for approval. Be looking for a
second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Under reports, item number 13 is a report regarding the joint review board meeting. I was not at that meeting. I think Jay was, but Jay stepped out. Mike was there. Good.
Which meetings?
There's been a few. The joint review board, the TIF district review with the school district and...
Oh, wonderful. Great meeting, actually.
So, the, the review for the TIF district, really interesting, actually. As a newer alderman, it's always, I don't know, TIF districts are always one of the things, hard, hard to understand at first, kind of, as, as far as I was concerned, but really good explanation of how we're sitting as far as recovery of, of some of the, the dollars that belong, or to each TIF district, closing of, I think we're, we're getting rid of, or one of them is going to be over soon, right? Jay, is that correct? One of the TIFs is reaching its sunset, and, and that was a positive TIF. And just general learning about how, how positive they can be for development of a community and new businesses in town. So, just, that was really it.
I guess part of our budget process, we'll get a TIF, TIF by TIF update, I think, is the time of year that we do that as well. And, and this meeting, I don't know if they mentioned it to you, Mike, when you were there, not, is part of relatively new legislation that requires that we get together on an annual basis with each of the community partners, the school district, Washington County, and MPTC, so that they can see the budgets and see where each of those is at. In the past, they'd only hear about it if we wanted a new TIF district, or if a district was really in a financial jam, we would get together. But I, this annual meeting, I think, gives those folks the opportunity to be able to report back to their constituents at how West Bend is doing.
And they were all in attendance at the meeting, so they have that opportunity.
Any questions for Mike? Thanks, Mike. Item 14, report by Alderman Jenkins and/or Kasten regarding the special planning commission meeting. That was a pretty quick meeting.
Yeah, sure. I just can report on that. Met June 26th, pretty quick. Two items. We expanded the dog care business, Charming Paws LLC, so they can hold more animals during the day and night. So, congrats to them on expanding their business. And as we touched on a little bit earlier, we approved code text amendments to allow mobile food vendors for conditional use permits.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? And being no further business before the coming council adjourn, are there any announcements tonight?
Don't forget about Regner Fest this, Nick, this coming weekend. It's going to be a good one.
Dirty Ninja Mud Run, we heard, was just up to almost 2,000 young people flying around, so water rates should be up with all the mud laundering after the kids come home. Mike?
Speaking of Regner Park, just thank you to all the volunteers and the coordinators and the staff here at City of West Bend Parks, Recs, and Forestry Department helped organize the Homegrown Music Festival, which was held yesterday at Regner Park. A great success, over 1,000 community members and Washington County residents came out to support local original musicians. We had a great time, and again, thank you to everyone involved.
Mike, thanks to you. I don't know if everyone knows, Mike, did you invent it, dream it up, concocted it? Whatever it was, it's a pretty fun fourth year. Not only was it at Regner Park yesterday, but bands were at, I believe, five venues downtown West Bend on Saturday night. Had a chance to hit a couple of those. It was a lot of fun, some great people, and brings a whole, whole nother crowd of, of, or whole nother group of enthusiasts into West Bend. It's pretty neat stuff. Good work, Mike. Anybody else? Have a great night, everyone.[1344.65]